The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, nation under our indivisible liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the Board of Selectmen meeting, and I'd like to begin with granting Westcat permission to record the meeting. Is there anyone else here recording the meeting?
I'm with the Westwood guys.
Okay, welcome. Okay, thank you. We have permission to do as well. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Glad to be here. Okay, so Chairman's update. Oh, this is such good news. We are starting off the night with an announcement that the town of Westwood, for the 18th consecutive year, is receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And just to add emphasis to what 18 years means, we have something in our packet telling us that there are only four communities in Massachusetts that have exceeded the record we have. Only four out of 351.
Sixty-one.
Many, many more. So the fact that Westwood is, has achieved this for the 18th year in a row is really remarkable. And the report, or the Excellence Award, the CAFRA, is part of our ongoing effort in our financial reporting that really speaks to the strength of the community. And Pam, I'm just going to read the couple paragraphs you gave us, and then I'll turn it over to you for further comments. This CAFRA award is awarded to the town of Westwood by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its FY '15 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by its government and its management. It reflects the commitment of the staff to meet the highest principles of governmental reporting. In order to receive the award, the town had to satisfy strict, nationally-recognized guidelines for reporting on year-end results and financial status. The report must also be user-friendly and easy to understand. This report is an important tool used by rating agencies to review the town's financial status. So I'll let you take it from there, because I have a feeling that last comment really matters a lot to us.
Absolutely. We just saw that, and we'll be talking about our bond rating coming up. But the CAFRA takes our year-end financial statements, which were required, and every town is required to produce each year, and every town does, but then it wraps in a lot of extra information. And it really flows from the selectmen's commitment to transparency, ease of information out to people. But the bond rating agencies love the CAFRA, because it's a national document, so they can pick it up, they know just where to go for the information that they need, and it makes it really easy for them to talk with us about financial information. They also know, from the list we saw, there's only 31 communities in Massachusetts who produce it at all, and then to have as many consecutive ones as we do. We do have nineteen, this is our 19th, so I just got it. Try not to get me back.
Oh. It was 18 on the last report. This is now the 19th. Got it.
So they know what that says about the community, the fact that we have it, and they know where we are on that list. And it really does all play into our overall.
And do they adjust what is involved in that much? Does it, has it changed over time, what the reporting includes?
It does change, so it is hard to keep up with it. Things like our pension obligations for reporting were not in it a number of years ago, and now there's certain things we need to do for that. Pension obligation, we've been, it's changed, things like that. But some of the things that the outside users like, because we also use this document that we sell off, we send this out to people. It has extensive history in some of the supplemental information that shows trends over a 10-year period, say, for revenue and development, things like that. So it makes it easy for someone to look and really get a feel for the town. But really, to put that together and to have that for 19 consecutive years, really shows just, you know, from all our staff and all our financial departments, kind of what they do day in and day out, to really have a financial system at a certain level is what lets us put this together and accomplish this.
Well, congratulations to you and your team. Marie, you, I know you're integral to it. Jim, Gavin, our treasurer. Sheila, who I know works on it extensively. Who else would you like to recognize in the department?
Kathy Foley.
Kathy.
Assistant Treasurer. And really, our staff in the collector's office and the assessor's office, kind of the way they're able to keep the records in great shape throughout the year.
That's terrific. Any comments?
No.
Congratulations. Very well. Congratulations.
Well, now you know that you're part of, it's just a well-oiled machine.
Nice to be able to say AAA bond rating.
It just rolls off the, it's very nice to say that in town meetings, too. I'm going to skip the other two things here. I'd like to get to scheduled action. Father George, you want to come forward and sit at the desk there?
Sure.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Okay, so, having been to the St. Mark's Greek Festival last year, I'll start by saying, what a wonderful event. Glad to have you back, glad you're doing it again. So you're here for a request for a one-day special wine and beer license. This is the second annual event. I understand that looking to expand the hours slightly from last year?
Yes.
So before, it was 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, and you'd like to go from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And Sunday, from noon to 8:00. Last year, it was noon to 5:00. So we have an expansion of hours, probably even more people, but I think the more, the better. You had a good system in place last year.
Yeah.
Parking will be different, because First Parish Church doesn't have space for you, right?
Well, they anticipate having some.
Good.
But we have the high schools, so, yeah.
Which isn't, it's going to be a beautiful couple of days, you're problem walking.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, and the request is actually not really a one-day, but from Friday setup to Monday breakdown. That's a request for the license. And I think the other element is of change, is you want to expand where people can consume
Yes.
the alcoholic beverages, from a narrow defined space to the whole dining area.
The whole dining area, yes.
So why don't you tell us how you're going to make sure that the service of alcohol is appropriately monitored, so that we know it's a safe event?
Well, it's going to be the same way we did it last year. The bar, let's call it a bar, just a little, you know, table with beer and wine, will not be with the rest of the food and the drinks. So to purchase a beer or a wine, you have to walk to the bartender. It's going to be off in one of the corners, underneath the tent. Of course, they have to show their ID and all that. And then it's, one person can buy one beer. They can't buy two, or three, or four, or five, and bring it back to the table. So if there's two beers, both people have to come and present their ID. We will have, like last year, people around the tent area, like some of the elders of the parish, walking around and making sure that, not only that beer is not served to underage drinkers, but beer doesn't leave the tent either, because we mentioned it last year, you know, we consider our whole property part of the church. So to us, it's sacred. We don't want, you know, alcohol being, you know, abused, and, you know, bottles tossed around, and this, stuff like that. So, you know, we anticipate, yes, maybe a little bit more people, so we're getting more volunteers. And that's basically it. Now, Janice had sent me over her document, and there was a suggestion in there. I don't know if it came from you or from Janice.
It came from Janice.
It came from Janice.
It was just an idea.
It was just a ticket. The unfortunate thing was that, when she sent it to me, I was away in Maine at our church camp. So I got it last night, but she's away on vacation now, so I couldn't ask her. She mentioned about a ticket system, but I still don't know how, we still have to monitor it anyways, whether we use tickets or not. You know, I see it as rather, if you're going to buy three beers, we want three, you know, over 21-years-of-age adults to come up.
And that's somebody else getting the ticket and going up to get it.
The whole idea was either a ticket, or better yet, what he's, what Father is describing, where somebody wants to buy alcohol, has to present their ID.
It's a separate point of purchase.
Yeah. And, and you know, looking at how it was last year, you know, it was mostly families from the community, really, from Westwood. And we anticipated being the same way. So we didn't sell that much, but there were a couple, you know, that wanted to buy. So I don't see it as, it doesn't encourage just hanging around and drinking.
Yeah.
It's just a place to eat some Greek food, and you spend a little time, you hear a little bit of Greek music, you try to buy a Greek pastry, and then you're home. And I think, I wish we tracked this. Maybe, we'll see if we could do it this year. A lot of people took stuff to go. And obviously, you know, we can't sell beer to go. So, you know, I don't see us having a major issue with, you know, trying to handle the alcohol.
And I have one more question, and I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Sure.
Who handles the actual sale? It says somebody that's tip-certified. Do you hire a caterer, or?
No, 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 no. We, there are a few members of our parish. One owns a restaurant with a bar down in the Plymouth area. And there's a couple of the younger fellows that during their college years worked as bartenders. So that has to be, you know, to be approved.
Yep.
We have to submit with a photo ID and a valid tip certification license.
As a drill. Okay. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I've been to Logic Week Festival, so.
I'm not sure I'm going to be around this weekend for this particular event this year, but I tell you, I, it was fabulous. It was such a great setup, food was phenomenal.
Thank you.
Your people in the parish were very friendly and welcoming.
Thank you.
So I think that's all great.
It means a lot to us.
Well, you know, it's, it's great to have you in the community. So we have the option of waiting till the next meeting, if we have any open questions that we want to address, but I'll leave it to one of my colleagues. If they are comfortable, you can make a motion.
So Mike, my only question is, the chief of police signed off on this. Jeff?
Yeah.
Yes, to submit the application, we need approval from the building department, the health department, fire, and police.
So I'm sure you still have to have a final inspection, once it's set up and the tents up, right?
Yes. So if, if, Janice has the application. The only approvals we have so far are from the police department.
Yeah, so you can just say it's subject to receipt of all.
Yeah, the fire needs, the fire and, and the health department need to see the setup, which will be one week before. And the
Building has to inspect it.
The, it's actually the tent company that files for the permit.
They file, but the building's not inspecting.
And once, and once they file for the permit, then they sign off. So that goes between them. And last year, Janice had the application, and then they signed it for her.
Okay.
It was recommended by the town to do it this way, because if we filed for the tent permit ourselves, we're viable and all that stuff, and let the professionals take care of it.
That's right. That's the right order.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the one-day liquor license, although it is from Friday, for beer and wine, from Friday, September 16th through Monday, September 19th, subject to receipt of all final inspections from all the necessary departments for the town.
Second.
All in favor. Aye. Opposed? None. So you're good. You don't need to come back. You just keep going with Janice in terms of the inspections.
Okay. I have just one question or request. This doesn't have to do with the liquor. I asked Janice if it was okay if we put a banner up on our property showing that we're going to have
I think, Mike, you get to review that and approve it?
We do, I think.
Yeah, I, my only
And so she told me to wait till today and ask you while I was here.
Well, we don't approve that, right?
No, I
Chris was like, and my only question that he'll ask separately is, where will it be located?
Right, right in the front, just like on the, near our sign, right there.
Okay, so I'd say prepare your application, show it to Abby and Abby.
Okay.
Okay.
Abby, Janice.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Abby's in this week, Janice is not.
Okay, good.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Have a great event.
Thank you, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we have, under the topic of alcohol, we have a wine tasting request. Are you here on behalf of Liz?
Liz Adams.
Come on up.
Okay, hot seat.
Yep, hot seat. Okay, so we have a request from High Street Market, owned by Liz Adams, to have a wine tasting event on Friday, September 30th. I guess the event would start at when? It said, want to go till 9:00?
Seven to nine.
It is seven to nine. It wouldn't start before the store closes?
Right.
Okay, so name and address for the record, and why don't you just comment on the request?
So Liz Adams, who's the owner of High Street Market, asked me to, you want to know why?
Yeah, just for the record.
Okay, my name is Katie Annas, and she asked me to come in. And Liz owns High Street Market, she's on vacation. So we want to request that we're able to have a wine tasting after we close the store from 7:00 to 9:00. And she's going to have, I think, four different wine vendors, and sample, and we'll have appetizers and that type of thing.
Is it by invitation only, or is it open? Do you know?
We'll probably do a Facebook, and we'll probably advertise at the store, and it's open to anybody.
Okay.
We haven't had one, she hasn't had one in a while, so this will be sort of nice, some new wines for the fall.
Okay. Other questions?
Looks like the last one was April 2015.
Okay, so we're way behind.
Yes.
My only question, has Janice reviewed this, Mike?
Yes, she has.
She has no issue?
No issues. And we granted this many tenants.
Yeah, but it's the process one needs to go through to be able to do it.
So I move that we grant an extension of hours for High Street Market on Friday, September 30th, 2016, for the purposes of wine tasting until 9:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay.
So you're good.
Come by and join us.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Hope it's a great event.
I'm going to ask you twice.
All right.
Okay, everybody who wants to talk about a bond sale, please come forward. Yeah, come up, yeah, you know, it's better to use the, be at the microphone, so they
It's a tough act to follow beer and wine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, now, yeah, but when we talk money, and we're doing so well in our borrowing, it's not a bad conversation. Okay, so we have had a significant bond transaction. Your, our finance director and our town treasurer are both here to discuss the borrowing that's taken place, and I guess we have to go through some approval processes to sign off on the final documents. And I'll turn it over to both of you, and why don't you just fill the public in?
Sure.
Jim's going to go through the short presentation that was in your packet. I put a copy in front of you, if it's easier to grab, but just to quickly kind of go through some of the facts of the bond sale.
All right. Treasurer Gavin, good evening.
In anticipation and requirement for the sale of the bond, as we went through a rating with Standard and Poor's, spearheaded by Pam, which is quite a presentation, Mike is involved, we have Marie, Kathy Foley, and so. And it's probably an hour and a half of just presenting and selling ourselves to the, you know, the rating agencies. It went extremely well. They do a thorough examination. Pam does an incredible job of bling things out for them. The presentation, quite frankly, answers questions before they ask them. It frames who we are and what we do, and why we're so effective, and why we're so financially strong and well-managed. So it, the presentation, I think, wins the day. Not that we don't have a lot of strengths, we do, but the presentation is very, very good. So it does, you know, talk about reserve balances, which are significantly stronger than what we have had, say, four or five years ago. OPEB efforts, which Westwood is head and shoulders above so many other communities in the Commonwealth in those efforts, as you know, sustaining our financial practices, our policies, maintaining conservative budgets. And talked about, Mike did a great job in talking about University Station, what we've been able to get down there, the prospects for new growth, and then our debt position, liability position, which is very, very favorable. So we were fortunate enough to be able to obtain the AAA rating, which is very, very important. And we were able to go to, to bid on the bond sale on August 10th. It was a $17 million, $17 million, $175,000 bond, which included $1 million for the high school design work, 13.2 million for the police headquarters, $890,000 for a land acquisition, and $2 million for the parking lot and road improvements of the Deer Field.
Just not, I know what you meant, but you said, design of the high school, it's design of the police headquarters.
I'm sorry.
I know, we all have flashbacks. I just didn't want to have people think we were doing something on the high school project. I know you know what you meant.
Police station, I'm sorry. So there were, a band that was issued, there were a couple of bands issued, a couple recently, and one goes back a little ways, the police headquarters goes back, but then the Deer Field was $2 million, and the land purchase for 890. So there was proceeds, 3.89 million to retire the bands, and then the 13.2 million dollars for the actual construction of the police station. It was a very competitive bid. We had six bidders. The band of, you know, where they bid and what their net interest cost was very, very thin. Raymond James was the winning bidder, 2.42 is the net interest cost for the bond, which is really incredible, because this is a 30-year bond, and we're getting 2.42. I think a year ago, we thought we had done incredibly well with 2.6. These are some of the lowest rates that have been seen in municipal, you know,
So fortunate.
Borrowing, oh, you know, it's been fantastic.
Raymond James has done other bond issuance for us?
Yes. They, yeah, bid before, and it's a lot of the same, you know,
Well, they're familiar. They're used to it. They know what they're reviewing.
Bank of America, yeah.
There's consistency.
You know, there's a lot of folks that are, you know, in those, these boutique investment houses, or the larger investment groups, looking for, you know, AAA municipal, you know, taxing temp bonds, for their, you know, they're institutional and they're private investors. So, so very similar, you know, in a little way, to the bond that we issued about a year ago, is there was a fairly significant premium associated with this, 900, about 950,000 dollars. And so we have a couple of options on what we can do with that, or what we have to do with that. So the net interest cost of 2.42 includes the funds that we received in premium. The way the bid, the bond was bid, is there were specific amounts given in premium to specific parts of this project, this bond. 397,000 of which was attributable to the Deer Field parking and the land, and then 450,000 attributable to the police, you know, construction project, the new police headquarters. And then there was about $100,000 in issuance costs. So the issuance cost comes out first. The police, because this is a brand-new issuance of debt, and we're financing 100%, we can actually use those bond premium funds for the construction of the, of the high school, there I go again, of the police station.
That's okay. At the groundbreaking, I refer to the police station as the fire station, so you're
We got, we have that, too. Right, yeah. The 397,000, which was attributable to the road work over there and the land purchase, it can't really be used to fund those projects, because we already borrowed all the money to fund that. So we're prohibited from saying, okay, let's take that money now and just put it straight towards the actual project out there for the road work, or for the land acquisition. So, so we're handling it two different ways. And, you know, we had spoken quite a bit about this, and planned with our financial advisor, on, you know, what we could do. The 297, 397,000, very similar to what we did a year ago, we would propose that the selectmen consider putting that into the capital stabilization, so that we can use that for future capital purposes. And we did that a year ago. We were able to use those funds, going back to town meeting, to pay for the new high school football field, which looks fantastic. So this would be something that, you know, the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, the Board of Selectmen can consider, you know, in months and years to come. 450,000, we would like to resize the borrowing of just that construction piece for the police station. So essentially, we're going to reduce the amount that we borrow, and we're going to use the cash to make up the shortfall debt, the total 3, 13.2 million. So it's a little bit different. We haven't really seen that before, but that's kind of what the, what the plans are. 2.42, again, unbelievable borrowing costs, you know.
So you couldn't turn down a 30-year borrowing at that rate?
No, you know, so, you know, we had spoken quite a bit about it, and the original pitch, you know, to the Board of Selectmen and to the town of Westwood, was we want to keep the numbers under a certain level. We only want to use so much of Westwood, our University Station funds. In order to accomplish that goal, is we would go out a little bit further in, you know, the repayment of this debt. So 30 years, we've never gone there before. Quite frankly, I don't like, you know, borrowing for 30 years. I think the 10 years is a great sweet spot for this town. We've been very, very successful at that over the years. It allows our debt to roll off real fast, and we can bring on new
Ramp capacity.
However, we did do the fire station a year ago. We've taken on some road work. We've taken on some land acquisition. We have a very substantial police project here. The rates are fantastic.
Yeah.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be a smart thing to give up something like that. I don't think, with the prospects for rates going up in the future, that we could ignore a 2.42 and a 30-year on just the high school, the police station piece. The other two pieces are, you know, within 10 years, just like we've always been. So
What's our annual debt service cost going to be on the police station now? What do we?
So the police, the design and construction together would be, you know, the average is going to be about 650,000.
Wow.
Even that highest year is just over 800,000, which was the numbers that we were using of various
Absolutely, so we're good on this.
Right, I'm talking.
So it really fits right in line with what we talked about, when people evaluated the project and went to approve it. And as Jim said, the 30-year for these larger, long-term assets makes sense. We, you know, don't go beyond the 10-year for any equipment purchases or even land purchase. But for a building like that, it actually, you know, in some ways, spreads the cost more fairly among the next generation of residents who'll be utilizing that facility.
Yeah, when we did the high school, I remember thinking how long 20 years sounded, and yet we're still here. I don't think, guessing I won't be here when the 30-year bond expires, but
We keep saying, I don't know where
It could be.
Nope, 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 that's definitely not the case. That is just absolutely amazing all around. So what do we need to do tonight to make all of this official?
What do we have roughly in the capital stabilization fund today?
Right now, we have just over $1 million. So at last fall's town meeting, we voted in some premium we received, and then
Sold it out.
A little bit of, yeah, we had, we voted in 1.7 million, and then at this May town meeting, we used about 650,000 for the football field.
On the track.
On the OPEB, what, is there a ratio of what our liability is versus where we are? How do you measure that, when you say we're doing well?
Yes, so with the, with the OPEB, it's all about getting on a 30-year funding schedule, just like with pension obligations. So they, every other year, you have to have your overall obligation liability calculated, and then they'll lay out, well, what's the funding schedule you need in place to meet that. So based on our last valuation, we need about 1.3 million in a year, and we, right now, have that built into our budget. And it really came from two significant times that we were able to restructure the health insurance. We took the savings from the cost and put it to the OPEB liability. So we are kind of right on track. So, you know, the liability's not solved today. It's a 30-year liability, but we're on the appropriate funding schedule to meet that.
So maybe we're not kicking that can down.
No, we're, no.
Which some municipalities are.
Yeah, some municipalities are.
The employees are the ones that, I do, it's their health insurance that they're basically saying, we're willing to readjust what we get today for the liability.
Right, so do we, do we give new hires today, post-retirement health Right, so do we, do we give new hires today, post-retirement healthcare?
We do. But we've really worked hard on that OPEB, and this is the kind of thing that Jim mentioned, when we do our presentation to the rating agencies, we don't just like let them look at the numbers, we kind of give them the story first, and say, you know, "We have been proactively working at this, you know, now for five or six years." The selectmen put the OPEB task force in place, and we really started, you know, gradually tried to pick away at the problem, and really attacking it, not just from the revenue side, which some towns are doing, just trying to come up with the money pool, but on the expense side, to taking action to reduce the overall cost, and then trying to find ways to pay for that within the budget, really, you know, taking it from all levels. As well as, we made a transition a couple of years ago, now that we do have some money in that trust account, Jim has transferred that investment to a state plan, a larger group investment that we can get better returns. So, all three of those things were in our most recent liability update, and it took the liability from, I think, fifty-five million down to thirty-five million, if the right number's right. So all of those actions, the revenue, the expense side, and the investment side, really made a difference. So, you have to have it updated every other year, again, just like the pension, but right now, we're on track with what we have in our budget. We need to update it, that number gradually each year, but in the range of about forty thousand dollars more each year, not dramatic increases, just to stay on track.
And it doesn't mean we won't do things in the future to reduce the expense side further, you know, there's some sort of opportunities to it.
Really a constant area to try to stay up with it. But it does let us, because that was done, we were able to do that within the structure of our budget, when university station money started to come, or things like the premium, kind of one-time revenue, we're able to look at the capital fund for those, instead of, you know, trying to play catch-up for the OPEB. So that's been real nice, that we're able to say, "Well, this is a one-time revenue, capital stabilization fund is a great place for that." And as Jim said, you know, we voted into the fund, and then a subsequent town meeting gets a chance to say, "Well, what do we want to use that for?"
Great, thank you.
So Pam, procedurally, we have to vote to approve and sign the bond first, before I read the language, correct?
I think the language.
Because it says that, I certify that we have, so I think we have to vote first.
Okay.
All right? So I've moved that we approve and sign the bond sale documents as recommended by the town treasurer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Close? None? Okay.
So, aye.
Pass and quay.
Yes, thank you. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Westwood, Massachusetts, certify that a meeting of the board was held on August twenty-second, two thousand sixteen, of which meeting, all members of the board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present. The following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. That it was further voted that the sale of sixteen million, six hundred forty-five thousand dollars, general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand sixteen bonds for the, of the town dated September first, two thousand sixteen, to Raymond James and Associates, Inc., at the price of seventeen million, five hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-five cents, and accrued interest is hereby approved and confirmed. The bond shall be payable on March first of the year, in the principal amounts, and to bear interest at the respective rates as followed, and it's listed on a, two thousand seventeen through two thousand and forty-six. The schedule is attached to this certification. I further certify that the votes were taken in a meeting open to the public, and that no vote was taken by secret ballot, and that the notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda of the meeting, which agenda included in the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours, or in the municipal building, that the office of the town clerk is located, or applicable, yeah, applicable, in accordance with the alternative methods of notice prescribed, or approved by the Attorney General, as set forth in ninety-nine forty CMR twenty-nine point zero three subsection two subsection V, at least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bond were taken in executive session, all in accordance with general laws, chapter thirty A, sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended. Let me repeat that.
You started, I didn't, I don't think you said.
So they have to do this, right?
I'm going to, go for it. You need these to stay in order?
The two tabs screw me up.
Jim, do you need these to stay in order?
I'll put them back in order.
Okay. Are these functional?
That's okay.
Can we with this one?
Jeff?
Yeah.
Your head hits the table a little. Okay, so, please explain why so many documents?
This is essentially like signing a mortgage for the, for the town, and that's why it requires a public vote, it's been authorized previously by town meeting, but there are a significant number of documents, because it is a long-term mortgage for the town.
One for a year?
Okay, those are just.
While you guys are still here, you can.
They're like increments of the law.
Can you be sure, when you're still here, that we've signed, all of us have signed all three, so we don't leave you without?
Do you have just the clerks' ones?
There's one here, yeah.
And I will say, we normally have.
Those are just yours?
Those are just yours.
Yes.
Normally Kathy Foley is here to handle all this for us, but this is great, you have it all.
So he's being on vacation during the summer?
So it's just like a mortgage, where the town keeps hold of one copy and have to send along the others.
Thirty years, when it gets paid off, they'll say, "Who are they?"
No, they'll be saying, "How did they get that rate?"
That's what they're really saying.
And how did they build the buildings, only that's right. Everyone will be tired.
I'd be going for just that.
Just like the high school.
We can build a high school for what we built.
No. Not at all.
And these bonds do now, we've issued long-term, all of the debt that town meeting has approved, and that's really great for us, as we go forward, we'll be able to have actual debt schedules, where we look at our budget and factoring things in.
Does it sound?
Great.
You really got a head there, John.
Everything's good, we signed all these.
Okay.
I mean, seriously.
Is this finishing the final ones? I'm the first to have on the finance report, if you want me to press that.
Please do.
Okay.
Thank you, Pam. So let me just do a lead-in, as we did at the last meeting, and I think we're doing at the next, next selectance meeting, we're having presentations from some of our town departments, and tonight, we'll start with the finance and treasury staff, anything that comes under that umbrella. It's twofold purpose, one, to educate and inform our newest board member, but more importantly, it's good for all of us to get an update, and for the public to hear of what our departments are doing that are so important to the ongoing work of the community and the town, so.
So, this organizational chart, as you will remember, was from the last time, and so likely did the last time, we've identified the departments that are presenting tonight. There are elected boards and elected officials, library, dress, and treasure, and the chairman just pointed out, finance, public safety, which is the fire department, and the tour of the human service, culture and recreation departments, which are mainly library and recreation, will be presenting tonight. So this kind of sets the framework for how they fit into our organizational chart. Turn it over to Pam, she's a finance director, and then the finance director. We're keeping it short and sweet, guys.
Well, it's pretty much the speed version, so the finance area deals with what you see in yellow here, the accounting, assessors, collector, treasurer's office, as well as on the left, are elected officials in the assessors, collector, and treasurer's departments. This is an org chart of the financial departments, and really, it's a unique blend of elected and appointed individuals, that's kind of what all the lines there are showing. But overall, the finance departments are responsible for the overall financial activities for the town. We are highly regulated and governed by the mass department of revenue. They have a separate division called the Division of Local Services, that has oversight of municipalities, so all of our financial, financial obligations come really through that. It comes under the Department of Revenue because of our taxation ability. There are, you know, the several offices that I'm going to talk about, each has a distinct purpose, but really, we all function as a team, and handle kind of that whole spectrum of financial requirements for the town. So, for Westwood, the finance departments are the assessors' office, the tax collector's office, town treasurer's office, the accounting office, and then our overall financial management and budget responsibilities coming from the Board of Selectmen's office. We really, those offices handle, we now handle about a hundred million dollars a year in revenue and expenditures through the whole cycle, so these are the departments handling that. And I think, really, the hallmark of our operation is the, really, the team effort amongst these departments, the cooperative effort between all of the departments, including the staff and the elected officials. We really have a unique setup, as compared to other communities, with elected and appointed positions, and I think we've worked really, really hard to maximize on that. So we really try to, you know, do the best for the town by maximizing on the elected and appointed staff. I think you see a great example of that tonight, where, you know, Jim is, you know, from his work in the banking industry, you know, he understands the debt, huge help when we're issuing bonds. So the interaction with the elected and appointed officials and staff throughout all these departments, really, I think, is what helps us perform well. I'll just go super quickly, the assessors' office, really, some of there, we, and the selectmen got this ahead of time, you know, really, they're responsible for kind of the valuation and of the whole financial cycle, making sure that property is valued fairly, equitably, and in accordance with anything coming from the mass department of revenue. The town's current property value is about four point six billion, so quite a bit of work done in the assessors' office to make sure that that's all up to date. They also process all abatements, whether for real estate, personal property, or motor vehicle. They play a major part in helping make sure we get our tax rate certified each year by the Department of Revenue, including, as the selectmen know, coming before you and working on and recommending to you that commercial residential tax shift, which is a very, very complicated, but very important issue for the town. They also process all the exemptions that elderly and disabled, and our veterans are eligible for, these are state programs that are processed by each town, but that the state reimburses us for. And I will say, they make a major effort to kind of get out into the community, and try to help people understand any of those programs that they might be eligible for. So the staff will go up to the COA and give presentations, kind of on some of those different ways that they're able to apply for exemptions or reductions to their tax bill. Just to look, again, the mix of elected and appointed staff, so the, you remember, elected board of assessors, Maureen Burdade, Mike Cron, and Mark Burfee, and it is the only elected board where they have to, when they're first put into office, they have to undergo a training and certification program by the Department of Revenue. So they always like to make people know that, that they have to go to school to be certified, to be assessors. And then, three positions, staff positions in the office. The tax collector is the next step in the process, once we value property and issue our tax, get our tax rate certified, it's the tax collector's office who is responsible for billing and collecting all of our revenue. So they're doing that in a timely manner, an accurate manner, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, sewer, anything that's flowing from a billing and collection. They also process municipal lien certificates, which every property that undergoes a sale or a refinance has to have as part of their closing process, that's a statement that says you're up to date or not in your payment of taxes, so it's an important thing that they do each time, that makes sure that if a property is being sold, and if there's outstanding taxes, the town would be paid. They are responsible for initiating the tax title process, and they also really do a lot of outreach, to make sure they're working with the taxpayers in the community, understanding any issues they have. There are always times where people might fall into a situation where they have difficulty paying a bill, and the tax collector's office is more than willing to meet with them, and help point out any resolution they can, with them, to help them process that, maybe get out a payment plan, something like that. Again, the mix, Aluziakka is our elected tax collector, and two positions, staff positions in that office. Town treasurer's office really handles all of the cash, once it's in place, they have custodial responsibility for all funds, town, school, grant, any place that we're getting money for, it's the treasurer's office who's responsible for that, responsible for all of our bank accounts, setting those up, handling those, all of our investments, they are responsible for all of the tax titles accounts, so if a property goes into past due, there's a very formal and legal process in place by the state that we have to follow in order to secure a lien on that property and pursue collection. The treasurer's office also handles all of the payroll and accounts payable checks, and just, and handling of any deductions. So what that means is we withhold from payroll, federal taxes, state taxes, retirement obligations, health insurance, and it's the treasurer's office who has to coordinate turning those over to the proper office for each thing. And then, as you know, the treasurer's office issues all debt authorized at town meeting, and we had an example of that tonight. And we have issued about thirty million dollars of debt over the last three years, so we've kept Jim and his office busy with that.
I think we've been keeping everybody.
Exactly. So again, elected town treasurer, Jim Gavin, and then one full and one part-time staff positions. Accounting department is responsible for recording all of our financial information, maintaining our books, in a sense, our general ledger, also processes all payroll and accounts payable for all town and school. So any bill we pay, or any payroll that we make, all runs through the town accountant's office. Also responsible for all of our grant activity, the capital project activities, so as we build our police station and our fire station, it's the town accountant's office who has to make sure all of those bills are being properly paid and recorded. There is an enormous effort at year-end, we have significant year-end reporting requirements to the Department of Revenue, and it's the accounting office that does all of that. And then one item that you may not be aware that they do, is that they're responsible of all of our insurance claims, so making sure that the policies are in place for all of our buildings, and property insurance, all kinds of insurance, but also processing all of those claims. So during the winter, if someone has a pothole issue or something like that, it's Marie's office in accounting that's handling that.
Does that also apply for the schools?
No, everything. And she's responsible for any claim that comes forth, to make sure we get that to the insurance company in a timely manner, so that it's eligible for reimbursement. One other thing I'll just mention with our payroll and accounts payable, again, everything comes through the accounting office, we have a decentralized financial system, so all of our departments, including our school department, can enter their information from their own site, can run reports from their own site, can look up their data from their own site. So that's really helpful, we've kind of pushed the information out to the departments to be able to use, so they can at any point run their own budget to actual, or, you know, look at where their accounts payables are. But it all feeds through the town accountant, and they're the ones who actually process that through, and prepare the warrants that the selectmen sign to actually. that through and prepare the warrants that the selectmen sign to actually pay our bills. So in this department, three full-time staff positions, Marie, and then a payroll coordinator and AP. And then the final area, kind of the overall financial management and budget. And so this is where the finance director's position and the board of selectmen in working with all of those areas. So my efforts are to coordinate all of those departments and make sure that everything is flowing through each department as we need to. We also make sure to have the budgets that the board of selectmen is obligated to present to the town each year, the operating budget and the capital budget, and taking those budgets through the whole cycle, from the selectmen development through the finance and warrant commission public hearing process, and then presenting those to town meeting. And then also really working on a lot of the issues that we already talked about tonight, the long-term planning, OPEB compliance, those types of things, monitoring our debt service, be responsible for our annual audit. So in that department, myself, and then one part-time position in the financial analyst. We also interact with a lot of other town boards on a regular basis. The Long-Term Financial Planning Committee, established by the selectmen, we do significant amount of work with them on some of those other projects. There's an audit committee in place, three members appointed, three residents appointed by the selectmen, who we work with to make sure they're reviewing our annual audit. We meet with them and the audit firm to make sure that that's all in place. An OPEB task force, we mentioned that tonight, and then as well as the sewer commission. We actually do prepare the sewer rates each year, and we work with the sewer commission to look at their long-term planning of their capital and debt service programs. We've for a long time been committed to open, transparent financial reporting, we talked about that earlier. We really approach everything with a really healthy respect that this is public money, and we treat everything coming from that. We have a lot of people in our various financial departments, and we mentioned the elected officials, they're town residents. So we make sure everything they do and how we're handling the money, that they should be comfortable standing up before town meeting and, you know, being ready to, you know, really answer to their neighbors on how we're handling the money. We really take a high priority for internal controls, checks and balances, making sure that we're cross-training. And we really, again, as I mentioned, we have to answer to the Department of Revenue on a lot of things that we do. We also work very hard on automation. That's helped us to kind of keep up with new requirements as things come. So a lot of our payroll and accounts payable, we've really tried to streamline over the last couple of years. We've tried to make it easier for both our residents and employees to get information online, to be able to look up their own information, and we have efforts continuing in that area. We've listed some recent accomplishments, but just super quick, the CAFRA award, as you mentioned, a lot of what we do in all these individual departments, as we mentioned, is what helps us get that AAA bond rating. We've really worked hard to make sure that our budgets are structurally balanced, we've worked on the OPEB. We've had, as you mentioned, a lot of activity recently on building projects and capital projects, and that's been a lot of work for the accounting department to kind of make sure we're keeping up on track with that, and they've done well with that. We've issued a lot of debt recently. We continually have high tax collection rates, and we have on an ongoing basis unqualified audit opinions, which means when the auditors come in, we're receiving clean opinions. Again, that all goes into a good bond rating and helping us with our financial year-end. So some of the future issues is really just to keep up with that continued level of activity coming from the university station. That's put effort in the valuing side on the assessors, as well as the revenue and analysis side on some of the other departments. So keeping up with these capital projects, continuing to work on our long-range planning. One item, I go down to the bottom there, is within the last couple of years, both our payroll and our financial software firms have been sold out to bigger firms, and we're just continuing to work with our IS department to monitor that. It's not something we're taking immediate action on, but sometimes when those larger firms come in and buy, there might be some transition, and at some point we have to, you know, come in and do a project to transition those. We're keeping an eye on those. And one other item I didn't put there that you'll see as we come forward, we do think this is a year where we need to do a little bit of work on our municipal budget, as we've had transition in our departments, our budget document and organization needs to follow. So for example, now we have the Community and Economic Development Department. We want to kind of reorganize the document that we have town meeting vote, and the way that's laid out to kind of reflect some of that. So you'll see that discussion as we start the operating budget later in the fall, that we'll start to look at some of that.
So you're gonna have to reorder everything and to get the past year comparisons and things?
I think it's just time, you'll see from some of our discussion, it'll be a better way for the selectmen to handle the finances and the municipal budget if we reorganize how we have it set up and start to move towards a different level of budget authority, not so much specifically the individual departments. It just causes some difficulties, and we can talk through that with you.
Yeah.
And we've talked about this in other years, but this is the year now. We've had so much kind of reorganization in some of the departments, and I think it's time that we need to do that. So that'll be our effort on the budget side this year.
Yeah. I think we need to keep FinCom close to that.
Yes.
So they understand when they finally receive something.
Yes, why it's changing and what makes sense.
Yeah, keep them close.
So we've been busy, and we'll continue to be busy with the same issues over the next couple of years, but we've worked really hard to kind of stay up to date with all of this and stay ahead of all of this activity.
Great.
Questions?
No, no questions. The 4.6 billion excludes tax-exempt property.
Does not include tax-exempt properties.
Isn't, okay.
Same thing you said.
Right. I just said it differently, okay. That's amazing, that number.
Yes.
To remove some of the larger properties that are tax exempt.
Yes, we really, you know, Westwood held value through the years when other towns didn't, and now with the new commercial value coming online, we've really, really had a strong uptick.
Is that a steady increase over time, or was it jumps here and there when the economy was strong?
We've had really constant continual residential increase in value. New housing stock in town has been coming in probably now for seven or eight years at a really high level. So, you know, any new housing stock, or if someone's taking down a house, they're putting up a million-dollar house. So that has really had that value. And then just in the last two years, we've seen the significant increase on the commercial side. That had kind of held steady, and then that really took a major increase last year, to the point where we, it has some issues, you'll see as we come up in the fall, that commercial residential split of value and what that means for the tax rate, because there was almost a shock when the increase in value plays a role in that mix.
And on that 4 billion, what's the split between residential and commercial? Any idea?
The commercial value is about 14% of the total town value.
It used to be 20%.
Yeah. Because of, yeah.
25, right? 24 points.
That's amazing. And because of the...
So 86% of that 4 billion is residential property?
Is residential. And because of the shift that the selectmen vote each year, that 14% pays about 24% of the total tax bill. So you really get to, you know, magnify when you're using that split. But because, you know, the residential has just been a really strong, steady increase over a number of years, it's just been a growing portion of overall value.
Thank you again. Did we sign everything?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know where to find us.
You know what an autograph session is all about.
All right. Next up, the fire department and chief William Scobal. Welcome, chief. See Islington Station going?
It's just...
Moving along. What's the yellow exterior, is that a sealant or...
Applying vapor barrier.
Vapor barrier, thank you.
Yeah, it's a spray on it, and that is vapor barrier that goes on basically.
I'm glad that's not the finished look.
Not like the yellow? I thought it was very apropos for even that sound.
He's a good sound, yeah.
Michael picked out...
Is it the right color?
Put them in any color you want. Michael picked out yellow.
Okay, so please, brief us on the department.
You click it there. So as, continuing on with the charts that were there, obviously, we fall down through the chain like everyone else, myself at the top, I am the deputy chief. As you can see, there's some people off to the side. The office manager, obviously Carolyn, has taken on a larger role as we expanded up through with university station, as well as the growth of the department. The people on the left, the training captain, the EMS coordinator, the safe officers, just to let you know, those are not people, that's their only job. These are people who are down, represented down below, that have ancillary duties. The department mechanic is really a very special person in that, in order to work on fire apparatus, you have to have certain certifications. It's not just some mechanic, somebody who knows how to work on fire trucks and ambulances. And we're very lucky to have someone that has all of those certifications and saves the town untold amount of money by keeping everything in-house and not contracting it up.
Who does that? That would be subbed out.
Jeff Wade, he's actually a firefighter, paramedic, and need him. And he's a mechanic, and he now works for us on a part-time basis. And just very, he's also, he's a licensed plumber, very, very capable person.
So where do you go if you don't have a Jeff?
If you don't have a Jeff, to the dealers. And as you can imagine, he operates, he's smiling, you understand. Down below, we are divided into four work groups in order to cover the 24-hour days of, hours of the day, as well as all seven days of the week. On each group, there is a captain and five firefighters assigned to station one, and a lieutenant, two firefighters assigned over to station two currently. That is how we deploy. Again, there's the four groups. The vast majority of the fire department are personnel, are paramedics, so they can treat at that level. There is at least one assigned over in station two, so that when they arrive first, they can start the advanced level of care prior to the arrival of the ambulance.
Chief, just a quick question. Will those numbers change at all when Islington Fire Station opens or will it stay the same?
It depends on, as I get down onto that, following up with the study that was done and the increasing of manpower. That's what we're aiming at, yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
So that, that number of personnel at station two, that's been the historical number?
Three. It's been that way since 1977.
I would just assume there was more people there.
Well, the little place that it was before, there was nowhere to put them.
Yeah, there really, there was no room for... And what would the capacity be, the new building?
Five or six, it can handle easily. So that is our numbers that you see up there right now. The 2,000 employees, again, the office manager and the apparatus maintenance specialist. The mission obviously is pretty straightforward, covering the major things that we do, fires, medical emergencies, hazardous materials releases, natural disasters, and enforcing laws. Running down through the areas of service, obviously, fire suppression is what the department was always about, is still our biggest concentration in that it has the highest risk for damage and loss of life and injury. So that is what we are mostly trained for. However, over the years, everything has morphed out. We have always done first aid in the fire department. We took over the ambulance services back in 1968, and have grown from just basically performing first aid up through the years that we were at the EMT level, where there are certain things we can do, and now up to the advanced life support level. So in the fire suppression, obviously, it's building fires, and it can be a single-family home, it can be multi-residential properties, like the elderly housing projects, or what we have built now down at university station. It can be car fires, it can be brush fires, which is in the news because of, well, driveway route on the highway for, I don't know, six or seven hours the other day. Just, it's dry, it happens. The ALS ambulance service, both treatment and transport. Bottom line is, we're bringing the emergency room out to you. These guys can do in the field quite a bit of what they do initially in the emergency room, giving drugs, where necessary, studying IVs, cardioversion, all these things that they can do in the field. Hazardous materials, incident response, so much different now than it was years ago. Before, you washed it down the drain, you didn't worry about the environment. Certainly not true anymore. And mandated, fire departments are mandated both by state DEP as well as federal EPA to be the lead agency to take care of these initially until we can get the state team in. Specialized search and rescue services obviously falls also to us, and it can be, you know, for the most part, the numbers are that we do vehicle extrication, but that changes over the years. They've changed the steel that they use in the cars. It's not the same that it used to be. So how do you, you get in through the different cars? The electric cars are a whole different problem, because you can't do what you did in a normal car. Also, high-angle rescue, ice rescue, water rescue, all these things that we are trained on and unfortunately have to use at some point during each year. Fire prevention and code enforcement, a large part of what we do. Every building that is built has to submit plans, they have to be reviewed for compliance with the laws, both fire laws in certain sections of the building code that we have to look at, obviously, fire alarm systems, sprinkler systems, but then following up with the occupancy inspections, going through every home that is sold, has to have a fire department inspection, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors. Obviously eats up a lot of our time. Public education, we get in the schools, we try and pass our word on to the children when they're young, and one of the great things about the SAFE program now is that they have also looked at the other end of our most vulnerable people, seniors, and that is now part of the grant. And we compete for a grant, it's a base-level grant, but then there are certain portions that go above that. We've been able to go up to the highest levels of the grant each year, to be able to not only get into the schools, but we go and work through the Council on Aging and up through the three major buildings that we have in town. Fire investigation, by law, we are mandated to investigate each fire, not only to see if it was an act, a criminal act, but also, was it something that could be prevented in the future? Is there a product liability issue that has the potential to harm someone else? Emergency planning, we do both on a local level here in town for our own emergency management agency, but on an area-wide one and then statewide as well, because a lot of times when incidents occur, it's not just Westwood, it's our others, other towns around us. Municipal fire alarm construction, the old fire alarm boxes you used to see out on the poles and are on all the buildings are being replaced now with radio boxes, a whole new technology. But we have two members of our fire department, again, that work their regular shifts, but as an ancillary duty, they take care of doing these, and they just did tremendous job during the buildup of university station. There was an immense amount of work down there to be done. And then the administration, obviously, we have to run the department, and whether it's payroll, paying bills, purchasing, reporting is huge for us, as Pam was talking about, what you need to do at year-end as far as reporting, but also the ambulance, the billing part of that that has to go through over our billing agents. Recent accomplishments, I spoke briefly about everything that went on at University Avenue. The first place all those plans stop after they clear the planning board is the fire department. We did the vast majority of this in-house with the help of some architectural engineering consultants, but in the end, the town kept control over all of those inspections and plan review, which was really important. In the end, we know what's in there. Station two, as that goes on, obviously, from the town side, we want to keep our eye on it. We have our own project manager, who I talk with probably pretty much on a daily basis, and keep an eye on what's going on there. Temporary station two was quite a big undertaking to get something there, and we did that all in-house. We generalled that, start to finish, changes, the construction, everything that had to be done, we did in-house. And so that, that really was...
How's it worked out?
It, I'll tell you, the guys made it work.
Yeah.
They've had a great attitude, they know what's coming at the end point, and they...
Keep their eye on the price.
They have worked very, very hard. I mean, they're in such cramped quarters that you can't believe, but you know what? They're making it work.
We'll free them soon.
Well, I hope you're right. Obviously, hiring and training new personnel during the buildup of university station. Initially, we've hired eight new people and to train them and get them online, and they are now, and they've been a great help. We designed those specifications, the new ambulance that was just delivered, and for the two new engines that will be coming up in this, that have come up in this last year's budget, we're pretty much done with those specifications. The SAFE program we talked about, we have been able to integrate tablet computers into our trucks and our cars, which is a big change from the old fixed monitors that were in the trucks. the trucks. We can now take these up and do our inspections, that they work jointly with our reporting system and our ambulance software.
Well, that must be efficient.
Well, it really is because now you can bring everything up right in front of you.
Yeah.
You know, the officer is going down the street and have the stuff right at his fingertips. So it's important. And that was done with the help of Emergency Management Planning Grant out of Southeast Homeland Security that we were able to get and help offset the costs for that. As you're well aware, 13 members of the department received the firefighter of the year award last year, which was really kind of special to be recognized for that. And Captain Stephen Lund was one of the very few who received the Medal of Valor. Kind of, kind of a special day.
Well deserved.
Sure. Issues and challenges, that's why we're here. Issues and challenges. Call volume increase, obviously, is increasing each year. In the written presentation, I gave you some numbers there that they... Multiple calls is something that's really starting to get to us. In 2015, 466 times, we had more than one call at once. Now, it could be two ambulance calls, which is not that big a deal, but if it's a building fire and an ambulance call, and you'll see it runs all the way up to, at one point, we had seven calls at once. It was actually a lightning storm where a whole bunch of lightning hits. But the two, three, and four calls in the same time span...
Have increased.
Have, have really increased. And that chart is in your, your... Keeping up with ongoing... In your written presentation? Page 40.
Numbers are down the bottom.
And the yellow chart in there that I just threw in, so you could see how University Station is changing our, our call volume. In 2012, we went down to what is our study area down there, 45 times. Last year, it was 180 times. And so far this time, year-to-date, last week when I wrote this, it was 205 times.
Are those mostly for ambulance chief or is it...
Pretty much an even split right now, a little bit of everything between fire alarm calls...
Gables.
Gables was an issue. Two there today, that we hadn't had any for a long time. And today it acted up again. But obviously, as that fills out more and more and as phase two starts to come on, you know, that's going to continue to increase and it's something that we track. I got to tell you, I, I don't mean to belittle the point, but the job that my captains do and the depth of tracking this stuff. This isn't just you do your report, you got to move it over into people forms and it goes over into an Excel spreadsheet so that we, so when you ask the questions, we can pull out the information. The reporting software that we normally do to state alone can't track what we needed it to do when you ask your questions. Keeping up with ongoing and changing technology is very difficult for us. As you know, in any profession right now, things are changing so quickly, but it does for us, but we have to budget so far in advance and unfortunately, our capital stuff costs so much money. You know, whether it's engines, self-contained breathing apparatus, our extrication equipment, our meters, all these things have changed so, but keeping up with that is a challenge. Analyzing the call patterns, referring back to the charts there, that's obviously things that we have to look at to come back to, to the question of how do we deploy our personnel? Obviously, all of these play into that. When we started the buildup, we had a study by ESCI who laid out, you know, a nice plan of where we should be going forward. So to complete that, which dovetails completely with how do we deploy the people over to Station Two. In order to have an ambulance along with the engine, we'd have to have five people and we want to keep the same here, so we'd have to have 10 at the shift complement. Right now, we're at nine, so we've still got a little ways to go to hit the last of the ESCI recommendation. That being said, we delayed a little bit because we had a timeline, nice timeline, we had no place to put them.
Yeah.
Really, until Station Two was finished.
So the bottom line is, you'd be looking for one person?
It's, it's one person per shift, which is four people. And then also in that plan is something that's kind of unique and just starting to take hold, which is peak hour staffing people. We know the majority of our calls are from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. So we want to try and put a couple of people into that time slot. Now, the counter to that is the most serious calls and most imaging calls are between 8:00 PM and 8:00 AM. So it's kind of a risk analysis where you want to put them, but obviously, we need to answer the pure number that hits in that peak hour.
Well, you've also had the benefit this time, I, I think, of getting these eight new people trained and up and running.
And they...
It's hard to absorb.
And we have been, and it is, it's a, it's a huge impact. We've been able to get some really good people.
Yeah.
And the hardest thing to get them is good fire training.
Mm-hmm.
Training, good fire experience, I should say. The training they get is excellent, but the experience is, you never know. But our neighbors have been very good about having a lot of fires, as well as what we've had in town. And so these new guys have, really, over the couple of years have received...
I see Needham has been extremely helpful.
Yes, Needham's been extremely helpful. Yes, they have. And so, but what it is they're able to take, that experience they get when they come back to town, is just one more thing that they've seen. Developing high, new hiring process where we are no longer a civil service community, we do our own hiring now. And so we want to come up with a, a good way that we can hand off and hand down on how we hire people, rather than just, I like him, I like him.
Was that last round through civil service with the eight?
The last round was, yes.
Since we're the first time.
I've hired, I've hired one who has not, but he was somebody already in our, in our system. Providing solid, realistic, ongoing, verifiable training. And this is something that I steal from someone else who's just a phenomenal trainer of public safety. This comes down to risk management across the board as well as liability. This is what we need to provide our people and it's not easy. When you're trying to train them on shift, they're in and out the door constantly. Trying to get them off-shift gets expensive. So this is a challenge, but it's something that I strongly believe in. And so we, we try as hard as we can to get that accomplished. Facility upgrades to Station One is the next step in the plan. It's done Station Two, the police station, we've got the town hall in there, a lot of the building facilities. Station One has, with its usefulness...
Issues.
Yes, and so we'll have to look at that. And terrorism, staying current with it is a moving target, no pun intended. What comes out from the federal government and how you should do things, what changes? Because it isn't just foreign terrorism, but it is domestic terrorism. It is school shootings and how do you handle those? The lockdown proved out not to be the way to go. If you can escape, escape. And instead of sneaking back waiting for SWAT team, now they want us going in because what they found out is we can save a lot more lives if we go in. We have to do it jointly with the police, this formation should do that in, but if you can get in, get the people, get them out, we can save lives. If we sit and wait, those lives are going to be lost. But again, it's training, it's resources, and all of that plays into the risk management. What is it we're facing? How does our role change and how do we stand up to meet it? So that's what I have.
Chief, that's awesome. Great presentation. Questions?
No.
Well, I guess if, if there's going to be a push to hire more people at some point, we're going to need new processes. Is someone helping you with that? I mean...
Yes, yeah, Jonas, yeah, we have HR on that. And it really, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, there's a lot of non-civil service departments, very similar to us Concord, Lexington, that, that hire that way.
And it's not that dissimilar from police or whatever?
No.
Requirements are different, the, the processes are...
It is not a real burdensome task, quite honestly, even without getting into a process, I have so many applications sitting at my desk from some really qualified people.
Refresh my memory, Mike, we didn't budget in this year's budget, the one we're in, FY17 for the new position. So you'd be gearing up in the second half of this fiscal year to get hires in if we can get through the budget process.
Yeah, as, as Pam and I start talking and how we fit things and time them and whatever. Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your good work. Oh, Tricia, we don't want to hold you till the end tonight. Come on forward. All right, so next up, we have Tricia Perry, Director of our Public Library System, to present on the library. Librarians.
Okay, we'll start, we're going to go for quick. So our organizational chart is up in front of you. I report to a Board of Library Trustees. It's a Board of six that are elected by the town and I also report directly to the town administrator as well, so there's a dual reporting structure. We have four department heads, Adult Services, Children's Services, Circulation, and Technical Services. We also have an Islington Branch Librarian, a Library Bookkeeper, Senior Custodian as our senior staff. And then nine full-time employees, 18 part-time with regular schedules, and then we have six seasonal part-time that fill in for vacations and absences. So that gives you just the list of positions. And our circulation, our Head of Circulation, Nancy Hogan, will be retiring in September after more than 15 years. So we are looking for a new Head of Circulation Services and we had some great applicants, so that's, that's really great. The short form of our mission statement is that the Westwood Public Library provides high-quality resources and diverse and creative opportunities for residents of all ages. I think that we have a great staff and their strength allows us to really succeed in this mission. We have been trying to increase our adult programming and teen and young adult programming specifically this past year and we'll be moving forward with that as we go through the year and into next year.
So what does that include? Things like author presentations?
Exactly. We have, for the fall upcoming, right now, we have a, Westwood Presents Local Authors, so we have four different authors coming in September, October, November. We also are doing a Brexit talk on what the implications are of that June 23rd vote with a professor from Boston College, who's an expert in Irish and European relations. We've also done the Westwood High Teen Study Nights and those have proved very popular. And in fact, today, I just, Molly and I met with the Head of Social Studies Curriculum at the high school to see how we can collaborate and, and work together on getting more teen and research programming for the teens. Westwood Public Library, to Nancy's point, consists of the main library and the Islington Branch Library. Combine the two libraries are open seven days a week, except for the months of July and August, when we don't open on Sundays. And the total hours that the libraries are open are 73 hours per week. Our areas of service provide residents with resources needed to explore topics of personal interest and that's also reading for pleasure, listening to audiobooks, watching videos. We supply print, video, audio, or visual content in a real-world or online environment. The second area of service is that we foster a culture of literacy that engages and captures the imagination of young readers. So this summer, we had more than 900 children registered for the summer reading program and of which 50 of them, if you drive around Westwood, you will see the "Summer Reading Champion Lives Here" signs, which that means that that individual, that child, has read 50-plus hours this summer, so. And to have more than 50 of them is pretty remarkable.
Good for them.
Yeah. We provide multiple programs for residents of all ages and in the past year, that was 700-plus programs that were library-sponsored, sponsored by the Friends of the Library, or community-sponsored. It didn't include all of the meetings that we have for various town organizations. These are actual programming initiatives. The other area of service is that residents of all ages have safe and welcoming physical spaces to meet and interact with others or to sit quietly and read, work and study, and we'll have open and accessible virtual spaces that support collaboration and networking. This find, this particular area of service came out of our long-range strategic planning initiative and this is something that we heard over and over again about not just the physical spaces, but also the virtual spaces and, and having that distinction between collaborative space, but also that quiet study space if people want to do, you know, anything, any kind of work that needs concentration, really.
Tricia, I have a question of the 700-plus programs. Do you have any idea of the total number of people? Do you quantify the number of attendees?
We do. For this past year, program attendance, 11,936.
I think that's the number that goes to anybody who thought the library era was dying.
I agree. I, it's remarkable. That's the number of people through the door that participated in programs.
That's great.
And it keeps growing. And that's, you know, we were closed at the main library for almost three months and that number, the year before, it was 9,700. And this does include Islington Branch in those numbers, but we're at almost 12,000.
The 73 hours per week, any sort of metric compared to other communities?
That is more than we're required to be open by any measure for the size population town that we have, so it exceeds the required amount. It's, 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 it's a very high number.
And I feel like, and I can't find it now, I thought I read in here somewhere a percentage, a utilization percentage. Did you, did you publish something about utilization of Islington?
Of the circulation?
Yeah.
Circulation, I just ran those numbers today. So for fiscal '16, it was 17% of our total circulation for the year. And historically, that's been right about where it's been, 17 to 18%. And that's just the material circulation for physical circs. It's not the overdrive or hoopla digital content, but in and out the door at Islington is about 17% in only three days. And we're only open three days a week there typically, so. Policing-making entity, we have the Board of Trustees, who is responsible for the administration and operation of the town library, including staffing, acquisitions, maintenance, and this is directly from their mission statement, and the promulgation of library rules and regulations. I'm very lucky to work with an amazing group of people. Amy Rans is heading up this year as the Chair, Wendy Thornton is the Clerk, Jessica Cole and Paul Fitzgerald just started in June, and then Mary Maisie Phelps and Mary Beth Persons have been involved for several years. An amazing group of hard-working, dedicated individuals. They meet monthly, July and August, not always, in meetings. If anyone wants to attend, it's usually the second Monday of the month at 7:30 at the library. Recent accomplishments, enhanced digital content for Westwood residents. We're trying to get to that available 24/7 content and we've added, a year ago, we added Hoopla, which is streaming digital content, movies, music, ebooks, and audiobooks. We've increased our Overdrive Advantage collection. We are actually adding Zineo, it's a digital magazine collection and that's going to be available, it's actually turned on now. So if you want to read Good Housekeeping or Forbes, you can get it right on your laptop. We worked with the high school staff, the PTO, Friends of the Library, and library staff to create teen study nights at the Westwood Public Library and that usually attracts upwards of 300 students over a three-night period. Expanded and enhanced programming for teens and adults, such as teen and adult book clubs hosted by library staff, the Great Decisions Discussion Series, that's monitored by our Adult Services Librarian, books and author talks, and movie screenings. And we're also working with the Human Resources Director and the library staff on a reclassification of library positions. Issues and challenges, we are developing and submitting a new five-year library strategic plan to the Board of Library Commissioners. It's required if you intend to go and pursue any sort of grant funding, it has to be an updated plan. We are continuing to develop and expand collaborative initiatives and opportunities with other town departments and outside groups. We are providing access to Zineo, that's the digital magazine collection, and that will be made available to Westwood residents and that, actually, if you go to our ebook content right now, you can sign right up. We did receive a MBLC LSTA Reader's Advisory Grant for $7,500 and that's a staff training, really, to provide better reader's advisory services from all of our staff across the board. And we're working to increase the visibility of the library and awareness of the collections and programs that are available. And we hope to continue to be involved in the dialogue and discussions of the potential improvement to Islington and ensure that library services meet patrons' needs while integrating with the town's planning and development. integrating with the town's planning and development efforts.
Do the Friends of the Library or Android of the Library have a booth at Westwood Day?
The Friends usually participate in the library booth. They were there last year, they, um...
Do they help promote the resources?
They do. They've been doing a lot of PR and marketing.
Because we're going to have good weather this year, Nicole knows.
I heard that.
We're not all going to wish we were inside at the library that day.
It's a low bar.
Mr. Byd. I interrupted you. Were you all set?
That is it?
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Fabulous. Thank you very much for doing that and keep up the great work as well.
All that with three months that you lost.
Yeah, really. Impressive. Isn't that so nice that, uh, that's all behind?
And our circulation figures could only go up.
Yeah, that's right. And we're happy to have that beautiful building. So now we have the Recreation Department and Nicole Banks here as the Recreation Director. Good to see you again and...
Thank you for having me tonight.
I gave a little advance billing of Westwood Day. I'm sure we'll hear about it in the presentation.
Left one, it's the left. Left click.
There you go.
Oh, I went past one. Well, you missed the first slide with our beautiful sign. Moving right along. I just want to say thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to give an update on what our department has been up to. And we have, of course, as usual, been very busy. We are in week nine right now of our summer season, so we're excited to be coming to the end of this very, very hot summer. Hopefully, we'll pull a little bit of that in for Westwood Day. We're gearing up next to go into full force on Westwood Day. But we just finished a summer with very high heat, a fantastic staff, and we served over thirty-nine-hundred participants in our summer program. So we're very proud of that. And we hope everybody just had a lot of fun and had a great time participating and glad that they came out to do the programs.
Do many people come in from other communities?
They do. The percentage is fairly low. I mean, it's, it's less than ten percent, but it does help many of the programs be able to run. And so you'll see in our brochure, we do have minimum numbers that are set on our programs. And being open to the outside communities does allow us at times to be able to run that and have that offering and not have to cancel on anybody. So that's, you know, we see that as a real benefit. We do have a non-resident fee that we charge in addition to what the Westwood residents pay. So that helps us offset being able to do that with the facilities and staffing that we have here. So you'll see our organizational chart here. We do have myself as the Recreation Director reporting to the town administrator. And you'll see the branch off from me is to our Recreation Commission. We have a fantastic, active Recreation Commission made up of seven members. And they do a great job helping out with, with what we do. And we honestly couldn't do it without those volunteers and all the volunteers in town that help us in many ways. Going from there, you will see our main staff right below. We have an aquatics manager who oversees the indoor pool, an aquatic specialist who is there to help out with the hours of operation. That facility is open from 5:00 a.m. till eight to ten p.m. in the evening, seven days a week. So that's a lot of hours to cover and a lot of programming that is done at the pool facility. We have a business manager who helps us oversee the business operation and tasks that we have. We do run with a revolving fund, so there's a lot of analysis and data that has to be presented within that. We work closely with the Rec Commission on that. We have a Recreation Assistant who is the face of our office. So when you come in, you will be greeted or on the phone or in person by, by her. And she's very helpful in helping us maintain our office hours and all the administrative duties that we have. A Sports and Fitness Manager, this position is, is responsible for sports, fitness program, field scheduling, and those activities. And a Program Manager who is also doing, doing programming. That gives us seven full-time staff in the department. And I would say, you know, a good portion of our staffing is made up by those programming components and that direct service piece that plays in there. We are about two-thirds self-funding. So what we have is a Recreation Revolving Fund that we have a fee-for-service set up that allows us to collect revenue from all of the services that we provide, the programs. And we put that back into supporting the staffing, salaries, facilities, and bringing in new and exciting programming for the community.
I want to talk about the Fitness Manager in some of our old business. But where did the date of November come from?
Um, I'm just trying to look out at, you know, getting, getting through some of the things that we've been doing right now, coming out through Westwood Day and then gearing up to be ready to post that. We may be able to do that sooner, but just to, you know, kind of speak to that, we do have an individual who was with our department for fourteen years. So we had a, a long service with this individual, which was fantastic for the community, but we really want to take a step back and look at the department as a whole, analyze the structure that we have, make sure that we make good decisions moving forward. We're not quite ready with a recommendation yet, but I know from the last meeting, I wasn't here at that meeting, but we are preparing a plan to be able to recommend moving forward.
I guess my concern is, though, that, that role typically is hands-on with some of the kids' programming.
Yes.
So you're about to go into a new season of kids' programs.
Yes, we're, we're up for the challenge. So what we did, we did have four weeks of summer programming left. We also have the fall programming that needed to be developed. And we have, like I said, we're just coming to the end of our summer programming. Our fall brochure is available on our website right now. And that will be going live on Wednesday for registrations. And we do have some of the sports and fitness programming that you're accustomed to there. So we've reached out to some other individuals to be able to provide those services. You know, we have, we have a really strong team and we're ready and prepared to, you know, cover where we need to cover. We did that through the summer to make sure that all the services were presented to the community in the way that, you know, the expectations are for them to be. And we think it went very well. Being down a staff person is going to be a challenge. We also have Westwood Day, which is, you know, we're gearing up to run that, down a person. But we still feel, you know, we want to, we don't want to rush it. So I, I wouldn't say I'm, you know, tied to November. I'm just trying to be realistic with, with where we are, really wanting to take the time to review it. I was at the Recreation Commission meeting earlier this evening and we did have a, a good discussion about moving forward with that position posting. So I, I think we're, we'll be ready soon. It's just going to be a matter of, you know, getting it posted and then probably post-Westwood Day, being able to take a look at...
So likely you'll come back to us at the September 12th meeting to request approval?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think that will be...
Again, if we have something in between technical care, this is what we really want to do, so you can think about it and give some feedback and be ready to go on the 12th.
Yeah, I don't want to rush. I, I just, I don't, I don't want to, I don't ever want to be in a position where there's a degradation of service because your programming is great. And, and the degradation is due to the fact that we've overthought it and we've over-processed it. So, so I respect where you are, but I think you're taking a little bit of a risk. But, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's your risk.
Yeah, and I mean, honestly, you know, it, it is a risk, but it, the time of year has been a challenge as well, you know? And it's, it's just, really, the main focus had to be the summer programming. That's our largest participation-wise and biggest number of, of, you know, kids and youth that we have in our care. So that was our main focus. And I can definitely tell you, we have, you know, some very good updates ready to come forward, you know, draft updates to job description and things like that. So we'll be ready to go. And, you know, I, I certainly appreciate that. I don't want to see us shorthanded any longer than we need to be either. We don't want to...
And the other thing is, I'm very, very comfortable with, with some meetings and some discussions, especially with Jones included, that we're covering all the major priorities. So there's nothing, if something slips, it's going to be a minor priority. It's not going to be a major issue. The department's going to run just fine.
Yeah, I mean, I had two kids at the camps. I mean, they, they loved them. And I was, you know, we didn't, you know, we didn't see any slip when the person left, you know? So you, you guys all did step up. So I don't want to think I had no faith.
That was priority number one. Yes, of course.
Right. But I guess, you know, you hear me, so, okay. Sorry.
No, not a problem. Definitely an important aspect of what we're doing.
And I'm sorry, what, the date of Westwood Day is?
Twenty-four. September twenty-four.
Thank God it's not the same weekend as the Greek Fest.
No, it's not. It's the next weekend. Yeah. That would be...
That would be huge.
How do I go back? Can you see those, Mike? Because I've skipped ahead too far.
Go back. No, no, not that. Oh, previous, go up, the, the next to the top.
The second one down, that one.
Second one down, next to the top, same thing.
Am I going previous?
Yep, you, oh, Mr. Byd. That's, you just backed away.
Yes, here we are. Okay. Sorry about that. Looking crazy here. So our mission statement is the mission of the Westwood Recreation Department to provide a broad variety of high-quality programs, activities and events for participants of all ages, interests and abilities. Westwood Recreation will strive to be a leader in the region providing these recreation services. You know, in a nutshell, this is what we do. And, you know, I, I think that our department does this very well. You know, hearing from the participants this summer and throughout the previous year, I think it is, the, the reputation precedes, precedes the, the offerings. And that is why we're so successful in being able to continue creating such great services for the community. I've listed out just some bullet points here of some of the different areas of service, and we'll get into more, some more details on these. But programming, community events, communication and marketing, pool operations, field permitting and scheduling, and long-term planning are some of the major areas that we're involved Areas of service or programming offerings, we do do work with aquatics, sports, fitness, performing arts, summer camp, and much more. We certainly couldn't put everything on here that is a, a part of what the community is interested in doing. We did just have a programming survey that went out. And so we continue to collect feedback and evaluate what the community needs and interests are. For event offerings, I've listed out what our event offerings currently are. New Year's Eve fireworks, March into Summer, which is our registration and open house event, fishing derby, summer band concerts, Fireman's Foam, and Westwood Day. Field scheduling and permitting. So we work with the school department and the youth sport groups and adult sport groups to do all the permitting for the fields in town. We maintain a public calendar for that. And we also deal with the courts, including the tennis courts and basketball courts. Field maintenance and improvements, we do coordinate with DPW, who are often the active users or have a group that's scheduled on those fields. And we work with the DPW to make sure that those are done at appropriate times. We have a pool facility operation that we oversee. We do all the oversight for the facility, safety and programming. And I do just want to point out that we do have scholarships available and they're available for Westwood residents in need to be able to take part in the programming that we offer. Continuing on with more areas of service, we have oversight and maintenance of two municipal playgrounds. We have the School Street Playground and the Tot Lot Playground. Both of those, we have a community organization that we partner with. For the Tot Lot, we partner with the Lions Club. And for School Street, we partner with the Young Women's Club. So it's very nice to have an active partner in maintaining those. And as you can see, we were recently ranked the number-one fenced-in playground. So if that playground wasn't busy enough already...
I know, you can't get enough.
...we now have this notoriety. But it really is, both of those playgrounds are so active and each plays such an important role. The Tot Lot is great for the little, little kids. It's fenced in, it's safe, you can sit back and relax as a parent. And the School Street Playground has just amazing equipment in there that is, you know, has an offering for just about every age level. And obviously was very popular with the community in getting that ranking. We, of course, have a high level of administration that we do for our department, including the finance, budgeting, and capital project planning, which we're just coming into the season for now. We do all of the posting, hiring, training, and evaluation for our seasonal and part-time staff. We work closely with the HR office to be able to do this, but we bring anywhere from eighty to a hundred employees on throughout the seasons, especially in the high summer season. That is quite a big offering and we want to make sure that they are onboarded and trained and ready to go for all of the programming needs. We are a very high rate of marketing for our programming. The outreach to the community is done in many different ways. We have high activity on social media, website, and email, as well as some of the more traditional sources of marketing such as a community brochure that goes out quarterly, press releases, the school bulletin, and many other promotional resources that we utilize. We have partnerships that we've developed with the municipal and school departments, local businesses and organizations. This has been so important for our department, especially when you look at the facilities that we have in town to be able to program in. We are often working with the school department for facilities and combining with our other human services group members to be able to provide, you know, something that will maybe go outside of an age group or be at a different location and throughout the community. And finally, over the last several years, we have become very active in long-range planning. And that has included the capital planning for the department. We are currently looking to update our master plan Recreation Chapter. And I am serving on the Islington Center Task Force. So we will play a vital role in that and make sure that all the recreation needs and wants for those portion of our community members will be met. And we'll have some great ideas for that. So that has been very active and I think an exciting opportunity for us as a town to look at. I did mention that we have a active Recreation Commission. I've listed out our, our membership. We do have a member position open. And actually, at tonight's meeting, Sheila Moylan will be moving into that full delegate position as recommended here.
Subject to our approval.
Subject to approval. Yes, exactly. No, you're right. This recommendation, well, our Recreation Commission would like to do that.
Sure, that's what you said.
Exactly. And we also have another interested member who has reached out to us with an interest in joining as an associate member. So we'll be getting together that resume and evaluation to meet with Mike and then come forward here if there's a recommendation there. So that's exciting to be at, at a full level for that. And, you know, that, that is an advisement committee. They do work closely with the director and the department. They review the recommendations for the budget, capital improvements, and also our revolving fund analysis. And that is very important for us to have that, that group to be able to be open and visible with what the financing is for the department. We do, they do also really help us with our events. And you can imagine it takes many, many volunteers to be able to do those. And we just couldn't do it without this group of dedicated volunteers. Recent accomplishments, I definitely want to highlight our pool facility enhancements. Sue Perry, who is our pool manager, has taken on some great improvements for the pool facility this past year. And those include new lockers. They're plastic lockers. We've gotten rid of the metal lockers, which of course, we're rusting. We've had pool deck tile replacement that really is surrounding the whole perimeter of the pool. And that does include updated depth markings to meet the current state code.
Do you have time to put new tile in?
Well...
Every day a week.
Yeah, it was, that, that took a, a three-day close down and we did do the lockers and the tile work all at the same time. It's a coordinated effort, so we had minimal closing. But that did take a little bit of, of time to close down for that. But well worth it, we think, for the improvement that was made there. We also improved our pool spectator area with a wheelchair-accessible section that is, you know, set off so they don't have to be in the aisles for that accessibility. And then in our pump room, which is the chemical control room for the pool, we have a new chemical control unit and a new UV filtration system. And that is really, you know, cutting-edge, top-of-the-line of what you can have for your filtration in keeping up with, making sure the pool is as clean and safe as it can be. We, last year, have opened the newly reconstructed Deerfield Fields. And we had an event that had Westwood Youth Softball and Westwood Little League there. And it was a fantastic event. I know that some of you made it, but it was just a really fun time. And we have a picture here of the little girls coming out and high-fiving the high school team. And just really nice to be able to have those new fields open. And they, they look spectacular. You know, we have to thank everybody that was involved with that. It took a lot of our department, school department, DPW, Recreation, all coming together to make sure that that happened. But it was great to get to see that and have the, the youth sport groups out there enjoying that with us. This past summer, we became a licensed summer camp. So our summer camp that operates at the high school is licensed through the Board of Health, which is a great, you know, improvement for us. We already met many of those guidelines, but this just gave us the credential behind it to say that we do have best practices for that program. That program runs about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty kids a week. So it was very important for us to make sure that we were up... for us to make sure that we were up to par with all the safety standards for that. And we also have a camp health record management system that we feels made it easier for the parents to be able to get that information in, and of course, for us to access it should we need it. And then we also have done some playground fixture updates at both of our playgrounds and are continuing to work on that. Like I said, they are highly utilized areas, and we need to keep up on the maintenance and taking a look at that. Issues and challenges. Of course, we can't be without these. We've always got, on to the next thing, right?
You wouldn't have a reason to come in every day if you didn't have these.
You know, some of the things that we're going to be looking at this coming year, we would like to do some community outreach and review the tennis courts that were removed at Morrison Park. So, we're coming up to the end of the fire station completion, and we want to take a look at that park as a whole and some of the items that may or may not be able to be done there. The tennis court that was removed, we do have it spaced out to see if it can fit. That, of course, would take away other options, such as the basketball and parking, so I think it's something that we need to look at and review and talk about as a community and what is wanted and needed there. Along with that, that building completion, we do have some use issues that have come out of it. There is a retaining wall that is in the softball field outfield area, and we are working on a plan currently in accordance with the users of that field to make sure that we get something there that they can continue on with their, with their use of that field.
What's the issue?
So, the issue is that the outfield is shorter because of where the retaining wall is, and so what we're looking at doing is putting up a safety net and fencing system. So, we have, if you go down there now, you'll see the poles have been set for the safety net. A, that's to protect the building that's going to be right behind it and the parking areas, and then a fencing system in front of it that essentially they'll, they'll be able to play off of the fence, so if it hits the net, it will be a home run. If it hits into the fence, it will stay in play, and they will have rules associated with doing that, so.
Get our own Green Monster?
Yeah.
Yeah, a mini Green Monster.
Age of Green.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that softball field, the Roach Brothers Field, is one of the few lit fields that we have, and so especially for the adult population, that's a really important field for them to be able to have night use at times when they're able to play and have that kind of activity. So, that's something we're helping to just facilitate and make sure that we get a plan in place that that can continue to be used. The other item that will be, you know, I kind of see as sort of completing that park because there's been a lot of really nice improvements, and with the new building, it is going to look very nice and well-done, is to take a look at the basketball court and do we want to move forward with resurfacing, or is there going to be a shift in what that area becomes? And that would be, you know, one thing that we have been waiting on is the needed resurfacing and fencing improvements for the basketball court at Morrison. I put on here Identify and Evaluate Potential Sites for Construction of Additional Fields. I think this can also go along with expansion of fields. There's been, you know, talk about expanding fields either through turf fields, lighted fields, or additional fields. This comes up constantly. We do have a lot of user groups, high activity level in town, and there just aren't enough fields, especially in the spring season, to go around for everybody. So, you know, this is just trying to think through what are the needs and what areas might we be able to do something. There is the new land purchase that just happened next to the high school, and so, you know, maybe there's some potential there, and that's something that if we are hearing from the sport groups that there's a need for fields, you know, would that be an appropriate location for something? Exploring the feasibility of lighting the tennis courts at the high school, this has been something that we've been having on the horizon for a few years. It was explored previously. Basically, we have a tennis complex of six courts at the high school, and with the removal of the Islington Court, that was the only lit court we had in town. So, taking a look at, you know, having that offering of night tennis and having that facility with several courts and parking available, would that be an appropriate use and something that the community would be open to, looking at lighting that court? And finally, I did list out considering transportation options. We have had on our capital plan for a few years now to replace our recreation van, and that is, you know, getting to be an age where it's still safe, it's still usable, but we're starting to see some expenses and costs with that. We also started a new program this summer called Playground Program, and that was at Deerfield, and we did do an X-Day transfer over to the high school for swim lessons and pool that was very highly rated by the participants of that program, and so if we can move forward with another transportation option to be able to continue that program as well as the summer camp program, that would be ideal for us to continue to serve and grill those programs.
So, the one thing I'm going to say is keep your eye on that tennis court issue at Morrison Park, because I feel the time has come to deliver on our commitment to the community to replicate that tennis court.
Yep.
So, I would hope that we have an answer and a proposal for Springtown meeting.
Yep.
There isn't a David goes by that I don't hear.
Well, you know, we had to ride out some of the other issues, but I just want to, we want to make sure it's, not that any of these aren't as important, but that has to be addressed.
Yeah, and I think that'll lead us to some decisions on some of the items, other items that are on there as well, once we know what that plan is like.
The dumb mill, correct. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time, I appreciate it.
Congratulations on everything that's getting done, and last billing, September 24th, Westwood Day.
All right, yes, we'll see you there.
We'll see you there. Community come one and all. I would like to take out of order Westcat, sorry. Mr. Jaleo, come on up. I'm not going to make you wait any longer. You've been nice to wait through all this, so.
Well, I'm on the board of Westcat, so you better give us some money.
Okay, on that note, let me go back now.
There's no money to be had.
There's no money to be had. You know, it's really, thank you for coming out. This is sort of standard business that had been put in advance for a while. Now, everything's back and operating, so we'll go back to standard business. So, Westcat is a commitment we have.
Excuse me, I'm not representing, I just joked. I am on the board, but I'm not here tonight about Westcat.
Oh, I thought you were.
No, no, I'm about something else, something completely separate in my neighborhood.
Well, I'm going to pretend like you're here for Westcat first, and that other piece will have to wait. So, let's talk about Westcat, and you can carry the message back, because I thought it was great that you were here for Westcat. So, Westcat, we have an agreement with Comcast and Verizon through license agreements that, I exit quarterly funds we receive, Mike?
Ah, yes, quarterly.
So, the funds are transmitted to the town, and we go through a voting process to, in turn, transfer them over to Westcat. So, we have three payments, one at nineteen thousand, three ninety-four and eighty-two cents, another three thousand, one oh-three and fourteen cents, and ten thousand, four-hundred-five dollars and ninety-one cents. I don't know why I said each one differently, but anyway, totaling thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars, eighty-seven cents. And if there are any questions? And then we just need a motion to approve the transfer?
Maybe we approve the transfer of the four said monies totaling thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred-three dollars and eighty-seven cents to Westcat per the Comcast and Verizon license agreements and the Westcat agreements signed by the Board of Selectmen.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. So, you can carry the message back to your board. I still have a couple of other things we need to do. So, we have appointments to make tonight. Okay. Whatever. Yeah, I'll go back to that and get this done. So, we have, let's see, three, four, four areas of appointments. First, we have the Local Emergency Planning Committee, and Linda Shay, our Health Director, has identified two individuals to fill roles on that committee, first being John Peterson, who's the Director of Plant Operations at Westwood Lodge Hospital, and the second, Jack Lopez, Community Relations Specialist, Eversource. That's great. Shall we take these one at a time?
Sure.
Any questions for Mike on these? No? Okay.
So, I move that we approve John Peterson and Jack Lopes, I think is how you pronounce it, to the Local Emergency Planning Committee for terms to expire on June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Okay, Dottie Powers is recommending two people to become election officers. She needs these folks, they join others who help cover state and presidential elections, of which we have primary coming up and then the general election in November. So, Lynn Lawless from Two Hundred School Street and Phyllis Spicer, I haven't heard her name in a while, Twenty Sherwood's wife.
That's just recommended.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Been a while.
Any questions?
No. So, I move that we approve both of the four said individuals, Lynn Lawless and Phyllis Spicer, as election officers for terms to expire on June 30th, 2017.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. Next, Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee. Jill Underdonk has been selected to serve as the Housing Authority Representative on our appointed Fair Housing Committee, replacing John Cummings, who served the role through FY16. I think it was there a little bit. So, she's been selected by who?
By the Westwood Housing Authority.
Okay, they've selected her, and we have to approve it. So, we are being requested to appoint Jill to service the representative to take the place that John Cummings had. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
So, I move that we approve Jill Underdonk as a member of the Housing Partnership Fair Housing Committee for term to expire on June 30th, 2017.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. And we're revisiting the MAPC representative. Case has been made to go back to the recommendation that had come to us from the Planning Board, which had the intention not only of having Steve Olinoff service the representative, but to get Dave Atkins involved in some of the various committees that they serve on. So, this is before us, again, revisiting. I think we had Mike in the major, in the primary seat, and Steve as an alternate, and Steve and Dave are both willing to attend, and I think, actually did thinking they had been appointed, whatever the case. So, it's before us, we want to reconsider.
Sure. I'm happy to reconsider, so that Mike doesn't have to go and Dave can get involved.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
So, I move that we reconsider our appointment and appoint Steve as the member and Dave as the alternate to MAPC.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, none. Okay, thank you. And let's go back to the annual Tootsie Roll Drive under New Business. This is a barn burner here. It's actually a very good thing. Knights of Columbus Council 252 covers both Westwood and Norwood. They consolidated when the Westwood Knights of Columbus operation closed, and annually they have a Tootsie Roll Drive, and it goes to a program called Aid God's Special Children. And their philosophy is to have every child, regardless of race, creed, or color, live a normal life as much as is humanly possible. And so, they do this Tootsie Roll Drive to raise funds, and a hundred percent of the funds go to the designated recipients. So, I'll entertain a motion to allow this event to occur on September 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
Do you want to do that, John?
So moved.
Knock yourself out. And?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Always nice people who are out there. Okay, we'll do some minutes, or a set of minutes, regular minutes, from August 8. I want to win my own questions.
I actually have a question.
Go ahead.
So, Mike, I think we had a discussion at the end of the Chief's presentation on the new traffic rules about a plan for the return of schools next week.
Okay.
There was going to be a communication plan, talked about the electric signage. None of that made it into the minutes.
All right.
And school starts a week from Wednesday, so we can defer to New Business, but I'm wondering, is there a plan? So, it's two parts. Number one, I think, I think that needs to be added.
Okay. So, what page is that again?
It's not here.
Page six of eleven.
So, when the Chief was in, when he finished up his presentation?
Well, I'll get that.
Can he get that out to us this week? I just think there needs to be some.
An outline of what his plan is for what's going on.
Okay. Also, Mike, on page one of the minutes, it says Chairman Michael Walsh.
Oh, yeah.
Not that I didn't like being chairman, but it is Nancy's turn.
These minutes are going to come back, because I have one at the very end on page nine. Lot of, on page nine, the final vote needs to be added in appointing Mr. Hearn to the Age of the Elderly.
Which I'm sure Blasiananamistri is there.
It just has us adjourning, the adjourning vote, but not the, not the vote on the actual. So, why don't you have those come back next time, Mike?
I will.
And be sure to follow up with the Chief.
Yeah, I'll get, the Chief's on vacation until Wednesday, just so.
Oh, that's fine.
Well, it might be that somebody in the department can pull that together. Any other business properly coming before the board? Mr. Jaleo?
Thank you.
How are you?
Well, thank you. I hope you're all well.
Yes. Happy summer.
I have two items that I'd like to bring up to you. First, Westwood Winds, I direct the Westwood Winds, and we have our concert August 8. I just wanted to inform you the level of community support that we get, and it's, I'm kind of proud of our community in that area. Westwood Winds involves, this year, thirty-seven people aging thirteen through ninety, and it gives them a lot of room to perform, but it also gives the opportunity for the
Intergenerational.
Community to come in and listen to it. So, it's a quick thing that goes together. But above the music and above all that good fuzzy feeling, we have funding from Foundation to Westwood Education, Dedham Savings, the Rotary Club, Wegmans, Roach Brothers, Foxhill Village. We had help from the Veteran Services, Michelle Miller, because we did it up. We honored the veterans this year. We had a lot of veterans show up. Counselor in Aging, she got the word out to veterans as well, and the Westwood Schools for allowing us to use the facility. So, it's quite a, it's, we're hoping that the word community being is also being involved in the community. So, I just wanted you to know that we have a little cultural event going on in the summer where probably not many people are around. That's our only.
When do you go on tour?
We tour Westwood. We finish it.
So, with all that support, you might as well be heading.
Did you get any coverage?
Well, they did have Ron Delatia's on stage, right?
Well, you know, I forgot to mention two more things, being on the Westcat Board. Westcat, obviously, it's up right now if you want to see the concert, but the newspapers were terrific, I have to say. I mean, you know, they helped.
Was the press cover that too?
It did.
Good.
They did.
Thank you.
Not me, but.
Yep, thank you. That's great.
And so, anyways, I just wanted to inform you that, you know, there's something that's going on that's cultural in nature and involves the community.
And it's good for everybody.
It is, it certainly is.
I wanted to try to go, but I think we were actually here at a meeting that night.
I think, I think you were, because it was a Monday night. The other issue, I brought this issue up to the board in the spring. We had a Downey School, and it's ongoing on, and that is, I live in Bay Street, I live diagonally across from Hanley School, and there are three issues that are going on there. First of all, speeding. It's just, you know, it's like a racetrack there, and we've called the police many times, and when the police are there at the parking lot, everything is parked, and as soon as nothing was there, we've got cement trucks bombing down there, we've got big trucks, we've got cars, it's crazy. So, that is an issue, but I have to back up onto the Bay Street to, you know, I look, I see a car on the road, I back up, and he's already on my back. I mean, I don't know how fast they're going, but they're going fast. So, my request is, you helped us for a short time when we asked for those radar-activated speed signs.
Right.
And one was placed there temporarily for about two weeks, and that was terrific. We, I see in Downey Schools, Downey Street, I see on Pond Street in front of Sheen School, and even on Canto Street now, you've got one of those permanent signs, and I'm wondering if you'd consider doing something like that.
That goes to the Police Department, for you.
But I know there was the Downey School part of the Safe Flights to School Project, so.
Yeah, the Sheen.
We had some, we had some that came out of Canto Street, they didn't want them, so.
That's right. Relocate them.
Well. We'll let further work go before we say problem solve, but.
Sure, I understand. I just wanted to bring your attention, this is my second time with the same problem.
Yep.
The other issue, this too, or the other issue is the Hanley Parking Lot itself, especially when the school is locked, I shouldn't say that, when, when. when school is not, I shouldn't say that, when the parents have gone, when the parking lot's empty, there's always cars pulling in there. Some are fine, some are harmless, others you just don't know. When school's in session, lots of cars are there during recess, and I don't know what those people are doing there, but it's, I don't, I have grandchildren now, they don't go to that school, but I think it's something that we should be concerned about.
Make us follow up with the chief.
My suggestion is no sign of some kind that says you can park if you, no standing parking, whatever, whatever the term is that you say that the adults, you shouldn't be there watching and waiting.
I like the one, video surveillance.
Something like that, if you, yeah. There was, there was a tree at one time in the middle of the parking lot that, well, it just died, and there was a sign on it years ago, but I'm not too sure what can be done, other than some sign that says you shouldn't be.
We'll leave it to public safety to determine.
Yeah, 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 right. Thirdly, I don't know if this is possible, some sort of ordinance preventing big trucks on Gay Street on, these are like tractor trailer trucks, for some reason. Worst of all are the cement trucks. I know it's seasonal, but God, Tresca must have an ongoing order somewhere in 128. It's just truck after truck, and many of them do barrel along, you know. So, as a matter of fact, we did call the police, and they suggested we call Tresca. It was interesting how it worked out.
Yeah, so then it will just divert it to Clackworth Tree.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, it pushes it to another street. I'd like to find out where they're going, could they go down 109, and then take 128?
They do go down 109, too.
Well, I think.
If they go north, they go down 109.
Yeah, what happens in the morning, if it's Friday, you do see them, I'll take the right on Gay Street, go over, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did talk a lot at last month's meeting about the speeding.
Oh, I should have been here, I didn't know.
No, no, it's, you know, it just kind of came up.
We also talked about the jam brakes.
Yeah.
I, you know, Jim, I think on the first two, there's likely something that can be done.
Sure.
The last one, I'm not too sure. The problem is they come out of what, Millis? Where's the Tresca?
Yeah, it's just Millis.
At 109, and they have to go somewhere.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, they get to Westwood, and that's when they decide to brake. I mean, yeah, I got behind one one morning who was getting north, and their pickup rate on 128 is 20, 25 miles an hour, 30, and everybody starts lagging behind them and trying, it's just, they're really tough. They're tough wherever they are.
Yeah.
They're either going too fast, too noisy down country roads, or too slow, can't move, and stalling out traffic on highway system, and then spewing out a lot of smoke at the same time, which is an environmental issue.
But I do think speeding is recurring.
Well, it definitely is not acceptable, so our police department will look into that.
I appreciate you bringing it to your proper, you know, departments, and it, I mean, this is our 40th year in Westwood, isn't it? When we first moved here, traffic everywhere was less.
Of course.
I mean, since the population's increased, and so much business has built up, you know.
It's the good news and the bad news about being located where we are. We're right at the entranceway to 128.
To everything.
To the highway system, so it's, that's the downside. And I just want to say, if you have these things on your mind in the future, you don't need to wait to come to and sit through a long meeting if you want to reach out to Mike, feel free to, but thank you for coming in and sharing that with us.
Well, thank you for hearing my issues.
You're welcome. Good to see you, and I'm glad the concert went so well. That's definitely a wonderful community, thanks. So, public press, had the public, press, any questions?
All set.
Great, thank you for coming. Okay, we are going to go into executive session now to discuss two issues. One is related to an employee contract regarding our town administrator, and one issue is review of executive session minutes and releasing of those that we approved for release. I will take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
Mr. Hickey?[1770.54]